All right, we will now begin the open mic session. The open mic session is designed to provide an opportunity for citizens to express their views on matters of concern in the school committee. The sessions are not designed to encourage debate or lengthy exchange of views, but are to have the committee understand numerous points of view. The committee would appreciate speakers keeping their presentation to three minutes in order to accommodate as many people as time permits. The chair reserves the right to limit the number of speakers on the same topic to three. All speakers must be at least eighteen years of age or enrolled in high school in Lynn Public Schools District. And having discussed their views with the student government representative, the chair reserves the right to rule the speaker out of order if they feel that the speaker's comments are personal in nature. If a speaker's comments are directed at a school community member or a member of school administration in attendance, that member through the chair may address the individual. The sessions will promptly commence fifteen minutes prior to the start of the regular school committee meeting. Uh, first up, we have Pete Oral. If you could please, uh, just state your name and, uh, and address. I have a timer here, thank you.
Hi, my name is Pete Oral. I live at two seventy Lynnfield Street. I'll be talking about the teams program. I am an autistic adult also recovering from a brain injury caused by medication prescribed to me. As someone with multiple non-apparent disabilities, I want better for my son and his peers. The disability community, my son and his peers also deserve better communication.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you. All right, next is Lisa Tulipani. Say your name and address, please.
This is Louise Dominique. She's coming with me just for support. My name is Lisa Tulipani. I also live at two seventy Lynnfield Street. Pete is my husband. I never change my last name because I have twenty different nursing licenses. I am a nationally renowned healthcare logistics expert specializing in review and auditing of healthcare policy. I'm a newly minted member of the Council of Parent Attorneys and Advocates, and the most important role I've ever had. The mother of a child whose life is profoundly impacted by spastic quadriplegic cerebral palsy. I haven't had time to provide feedback about the team's move. And forgive me if I go over three minutes, it will be. It won't be that long. Um, I just haven't had a time to come and speak. Since the announcement was made about ninety-ish days ago, my son has had over forty outpatient appointments. A planned procedure under anesthesia, an unplanned surgery, three emergency room visits, seven medication changes. And currently, he's been hospitalized for the past nine days. I don't know when he is coming home. As he is required to be with a registered nurse at all times to live, I can rarely attend meetings in the evening. I'm only able to be here tonight because he is hospitalized. I haven't been home in a week. I came home tonight to shower and we had to wait for traffic to dissipate before we head back to MGH. So lucky for you, I'm here at the school committee meeting waiting for traffic to dissipate. This pattern of illness in hospitalization, hospitalization is common for teams program students. They are the most medically fragile in our community. Some of these children have tracheostomies, some like my son have feeding tubes, most have mobility issues, several are wheelchair users. Many of these families do not have a second during the season of respiratory illness. Our kids don't just miss school, they end up intubated in the hospital. Many of us have not had time to even check our emails to gather our thoughts in reply because we are trying to keep our kids alive during the winter months. So I, I know there's been improvements, but I just, I have to say my piece based on what I know. Um, Lorraine, thank you for, um, giving me some information. And I want to thank Andrea and Sean who have reached out, um, knowing my situation and, um, for my feedback. But I do feel it needs to be said openly. Um, there were over fifty members of the, of the team's program staff. The parking lot does not accommodate fifty part, fifty cars. Even if you find satellite parking, have you ever driven a car and tried to turn around in that area? I live right there. I have a minivan. It is impossible. How do you expect school buses to do so? What is going to happen during the extended school year when the boaters and teachers are fighting over spots? When the boaters are pissed off, pardon my French, that their parking lot is filled with school buses? I also want to say something out loud about the safety concern that a few parents brought forward. The special education department in the city found no issue in planning a move to a building that abuts a body of water, which is also remaining a public boat ramp. At the time, um, the move was announced, there was no forethought to talk about fencing. I just want to make it clear that statistically, the number one cause of death in children with intellectual and developmental disabilities is drowning. This is real. This is real. To plan the move to this property is such an egregious oversight on this body's part, which shows little to no respect for life. And it also informs the public that although this is autism acceptance month, you are woefully unaware. We are caring for our children in a system in a city that is not designed for them. Even according to Vision Lynn, it's not going to be designed for them. There is no mention of moving the teams program, but extensive information about other school improvement projects and new builds. The teams program and disability community aren't even mentioned as a demographic in Vision Lynn. According to your own twenty-two, sorry, twenty twenty-two report, there are about fourteen thousand humans in Lynn with disabilities. If you factor that in fifteen percent of a given population serve as full-time family caregivers or caregivers in a way that prevents them from earning in- income, that brings the total of the disability community of Lynn to twenty-nine thousand. When you are in a population of a hundred, approximately a hundred thousand people, the math is easy. That's pretty close to a third of the city's population that was not even mentioned in the Vision Lynn planning. There are improvements to the city, and I do applaud you for learning about inclusion, for trying to make a difference. However, updates to City Hall and other public buildings are just being made. Lynn has taken thirty-four years to comply with federal law, bringing buildings up to date. How long will it be until the teams program students are treated with dignity and included in society? Another thirty-four years? I also want to say that the fact two Lori students who are also being moved deserve a plan that is worthy of their humanity.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Uh, can I just say a few more minutes, just, just a few more things because then we're going back to Mass General, please?
Okay.
Allow me.
It was a three-minute limit and we're, we're three minutes over that. So I, I, I just in fairness to everyone that, that comes through here, I just need to ask you to please start to wrap up.
Okay. I ask you to reconsider the plan to one that does not increase the risk of mortality to this children. Please do a traffic study going through YMS Square. EMTs, their delay will cause decreased outcomes. I'm wiping down the table because my son has an infection. Thank you for your time. I have statistics and other information available to make your decisions more evidence-based because it's evident they're not. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for sharing that. Is there anyone else wishing to speak at open mic? Anyone else for open mic? Last call for open mic. Thank you. Now called to order the seventh regular meeting of the school committee. Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos, absent. Member Dugan?
Present.
Member Gailey?
Present.
Member Peña?
Present.
Member Reed?
Present.
Present.
Mayor Nicholson?
Present.
If you'll all please rise if you're able, uh, to pursue to the fag and remain standing for a moment of silence. Please remain standing for a moment of silence in memory of Patricia Mitchell, former chief lunch lady at Tracy School, April fourth, two thousand twenty-four. Thank you. First item is the minutes.
Uh, make a motion to accept the sixth regular meeting on March twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Nice have it. Next is appointments and elections.
Thank you. Um, the first appointment, uh, is Stephanie Doucette. Uh, she was the interim principal at Thurgood Marshall Middle School. And upon interview of the committee, she was selected unanimously by the committee to be the permanent now principal. So congratulations to Ms. Doucette. The second recommendation for administrator of special education is for, um, Dr. Christina Kalella. Uh, she was interviewed along with another applicant for the position. There were a total of twelve questions asked of both applicants. Dr. Kalella responded to each question in a thorough, explicit manner, uh, which truly exhibited her expertise of special education practices, compliance, and she displayed a level of professionalism that LPS deserves. Um, the committee voted unanimously to recommend Dr. Kalella uh, for administrator of special education and for me, for my recommendation to bring forward to you as the school committee.
Member Gailey.
Um, I'd like to make a motion to hire Dr. Christina Kalella as the administrative of special education.
Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos, absent. Member Dugan?
Uh, Dr. Christina Kalella.
Member Gailey?
Dr. Christina Kalella.
Member Peña?
Dr. Christina Kalella.
Member Reed?
Dr. Christina Kalella.
Member Sadowite?
Dr. Christina Kalella.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes, Dr. Kalella. Next item is presentations.
So this evening, uh, we're going to share the summer school programs, um, for twenty twenty-four. And Noel Bolio, who's our assistant director, and Dr. Gardner, the executive director of innovation, will both, um, share in this presentation.
While, while we're getting set up here, I just wanted to also welcome back our student representative, DeeDee from Lindtac. Welcome back. Great to have you back.
Um, good afternoon. I'm Noel Bolio, Assistant Director of Extended Learning.
I'm Gardner, Executive Director of Innovation and Grants Management.
We're here today to provide an overview of the programs that will run this summer. I'll be sharing information about high school credit recovery, acceleration academies, and other programs that have run in the past. Shannon and I will be glad to answer any questions after this brief presentation. Credit recovery will be offered to all rising grade nine through twelve students. The programs will run at Lynn Classical and Lynn English from July eighth to August eighth. Monday through Thursday, eight to eleven. Last summer, the credit recovery program served just under three hundred and fifty students. As a result, many students were promoted to the next grade level and remain on track for graduation. Throughout marking period four, students will be notified by their school counselors as to whether they should attend summer school for credit recovery. The in-district cost to students is a flat fee of sixty-five dollars. Out-of-district students and families can contact me for more information. Acceleration academies are another type of program being offered this summer. LPS recently received a grant for two hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars to run small acceleration academies for early literacy, ELA, and math at schools identified as needing targeted assistance. Grant guidelines require the use of a variety of assessment data to determine who will be invited to attend the academies at each school. Identified schools can serve up to ten percent of the targeted grade level population. The total number of students projected to be invited across the district is approximately six hundred. The early literacy academies will serve rising kindergartners and first and second graders and are scheduled for a two-week period from July eighth to July eighteenth, Monday to Thursday, eight AM to eleven thirty AM. The ELA academies will serve rising sixth and tenth graders and are scheduled for a two-week period from July eighth to July eighteenth, Monday through Thursday, eight AM to eleven thirty AM. The math academies will serve rising sixth and rising tenth graders also and are scheduled for a two-week period from July twenty-second to August first, Monday through Thursday, eight AM to eleven thirty AM. There are some additional programs listed here, um, that have been running in the past and will also run, um, this summer. The learning and leadership program at Endocot, the, um, Breed All-Stars program, the project, uh, the Project Yes program at Marshall. Um, LVTI will have a summer program. Dream More at Marshall's for leap, uh, from Leap for Education. Uh, the College Express and Boot Camps will run at all three high schools. And the GE Girls at MIT program will again run this year, um, for a week in July. And then there'll be the North Shore program for the Frederick Douglass Collegiate Academy. Just some additional information, breakfast, uh, and lunch will be served, um, at all programs. And just a note that there are several buildings, um, that are scheduled for maintenance work this summer. And so as a result, we're going to have to, we're going to have to shift some of the, um, acceleration academies. And, and there is currently a relocation plan being established. And that's, that's really all. Can I answer any questions?
Member Sadowite.
Thank you for your presentation. Um, I was wondering if we have any protocol or process in place, um, at each school when it comes to staffing?
For the acceleration academies or for all of it or?
For all of it.
So for the credit recovery programs, um, it goes by mainly by certification and seniority, right? Depending on whether or not, um, for example, if a staff is working a current program and they apply for, for the credit recovery or another summer program, then they can get priority if they're, if they're properly licensed. And, um, seniority date can play a role in that as well. For the acceleration academies, we will be meeting with April Reed next week to, or in the coming days to see if there's anything else. We need to, you know, take a, a close look at the grant, um, guidelines and then also just touch base with April Reed to make sure that we're on track.
And then, um, what are class sizes?
For the acceleration?
Yes.
Um, ten to twelve students. They're, they're very small, um, intentionally, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Member Dugan, Member Gailey.
Uh, thank you for the presentation. Um, in terms of the accelerated program, uh, for the early literacy, the, the rising K to two students, um, how are those choosing, excuse me, students chosen or are they, how, how are those kids chosen for that?
So, I mean, the students are chosen, um, data will be used. Uh, that's also a guideline of the grant. And so I, I'm going to defer to Michelle Winslow, um, the AD for reading and early literacy. And also, um, work with, um, you know, primarily I'll defer to her, but there are also other programs like Spring Board that can, is able to work and is currently in the schools and they might be an option this summer. Um, and so I'm exploring all options at this point.
Okay. Okay.
Yes, there is, um, data is required.
All right.
In order to select the students.
And that's the same for the math middle school program?
For everything, yes.
Thank you.
Member Gailey.
Thank you for your presentation. Um, I'd like to know about the additional programs. I, I know they're very, um, highly thought of in our community, especially the Endocot learning, um, the GE Girls at MIT. And my question is, how do students apply for these?
So for Endocot, the students, um, can apply after receiving a teacher recommendation.
Okay, so they need a teacher recommendation?
They do.
Okay.
For the GE Girls at MIT, there is also an application process. I've been working with the grade six guidance counselors, uh, where they're rising seventh graders and grades, um, six science teachers at the middle schools. And, um, it's also based on teacher recommendation and who they think will be a good fit. It's not necessarily, um, you know, maybe a top performing student, but certainly just a student who has a love of science and would really, um, thrive in a environment like this.
My, um, my niece Grace went to the GE Girls MIT and she has her master's in engineering from Winston Polytech. She really, it really sparked an interest for her.
Oh, great.
It's a great program. Thank you. And I hear glowing about Endocot that their children go away for a week to a college. Thank you.
Member Reed.
Uh, thanks for the presentation. Um, for, for credit recovery, is this like a traditional summer school or is this the online computer-based credit recovery?
So, um, I am.
So traditionally, I know it's a little relative.
No, no, that's okay. I, I understand the question. So last year I was able to, last summer, I was able to, um, you know, observe, uh, closely the summer school that was run, both for, um, students who were on a platform called Edge Newity.
Yeah.
And so that was asynchronous. And then also students who were on a platform, um, Schoology, um, that was, uh, those students were supported more by, the English learners were supported more by, um, the staff in the room. And so this year, I'm hoping to create two, two sets of cohorts where students on Edge Newity, uh, will need perhaps less support and students who are enrolled in the Schoology courses will receive direct live instruction four days a week. And so that hasn't been happening. It has been more self-driven and, um, you know, kind of a heavy reliance on the computer programs themselves. And I really think that it's important to bring in this live instruction piece, particularly for some of our students who, um, need it the most, frankly. And so I, I'm trying to separate that and I'm hoping that's going to be successful for everyone.
Great. Yeah, no, I'm glad you said that. That's kind of what my concern as well. Because I know I actually took credit recovery when I was at Classical and I remember it wasn't, it was a long time ago, but it wasn't as robust. And I can imagine the summer, it's even tougher for, for a lot of these students to, uh, you know, focus on an asynchronous, uh, program. So that's great. Um, just one other clarification. I know it probably doesn't fall under this umbrella, but there, there's also a number of special ed programs that run through the summer, a continuation of sort of some of the school year programs too.
Are they continuing?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, just so people at home.
And our ESY program will, will run as it normally would. Um, and the special, Dr. Kalella will be overseeing those.
Yep, thanks.
Member Peña.
Thank you for the presentation. I, I just have a simple question as, um, part of the additional programs. For your, um, your Breed All-Stars and your Project Yes, do you know if, if we're going to have, um, any therapists? Are we going to be able to staff any therapists for them? Because I know these appear, carry, uh, support groups.
So at this time, I'm not sure. I spoke with Julie Luth this morning, um, really just, uh, first focusing on where will be the best place to move these students because Breed will be under construction. And so there are some, but in terms of staffing, and I, I know the pro, program, uh, will run. I also have been in contact with Shoaor Corianti and she's very excited about it. But also, they want to make sure that, um, moving the program will be, uh, will serve everyone.
Yeah. Because Breed's, yeah, Breed's actually one of the schools that's going to be.
Right.
Lenny, historically, yeah, we, we have clinical support, um, entrenched in both of those programs. The other thing that also happens is that our, uh, George Bacis and Matt Durgan also support those programs during the summer as well, being onsite.
Great. Thank you so much for the presentation. Um, we, we are grateful to have all these offerings, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks to all the team that provides them. Next, we have a field trip request for the Thurgood Marshall Middle School eighth grade to go to Canyon Lake Park in Salem, New Hampshire on June tenth, two thousand twenty-four. What's the recommendation of the superintendent?
The recommendation is for the school committee to approve, um, these excited Thurgood Marshall Middle School students to go to Salem, New Hampshire.
With the committee?
Second.
Motion to accept.
Great. And then I heard a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nice have it. Next is a donation of two hundred and fifty dollars from the Boys and Girls Club of Greer Lynn to our inclusivity program. What's the recommendation?
The recommendation, um, is through, uh, Mr. Robert Bishop that secured this donation. And it is to accept, uh, the two hundred and fifty dollars from the Boys and Girls Club for the inclusivity programs.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nice have it. Projector set from Peg and Jim Belandred Aborn.
The recommendation's to accept the donation of a projector for the Aborn School.
Motion to accept it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nice have it. Two thousand dollars from Kings Lynn Residence Council to Breed Middle School.
The, the recommendation is for the school committee to accept, um, the two thousand dollars on behalf of Breed Middle School.
Motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is a vote to continue nonparticipation in school choice next year.
The recommendation is to continue the nonparticipation of school choice since we have no seats to open for any out-of-district students.
A motion to accept.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos, absent. Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. And then a vote for the last day of school for this school year to be June twentieth as a half day.
That is the recommendation, um, for June twentieth to be a half day, uh, at the school committee as well.
Motion to accept June twentieth, half a day is the last day of school.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos, absent. Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
And we will post that for students and parents on the website tomorrow. I'm sure they'll be very excited that June twentieth is the last day for this school year. Thank you.
Great. So no further business?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Joe. See.
That it would just delay the opening, but the work will continue and we are looking to get students and teachers in as quickly as possible. And then there's a question that I'm not sure how to answer. If the building was more, has more, no, sorry, was, if the building was more than 5.8 arches, what would everyone do? Not sure what that means. We're asking for clarification on my question.
Oh, I think they need acres. I meant what were to happen.
I can try to answer that. I could say that Steve would be really relieved if he'd had more than five acres to work with for the project. The Breeds Reservoir site is a very large site. We are not conserving all of it as part of the mitigation. So we would have included probably whatever was going to be the existing site swap as a two to one in the swap of the Breeds Reservoir site. So there is significantly more acreage behind what we're conserving on the frontage of the roadway of Parkland that can be used for future Article 97 mitigation purposes or would be in this case. Come on up.
You haven't got any more. So it sounds like there's still going to be a Magnolia Park here with basketball court and the playground, right? But also the reservoir is going to be additional park space?
So at the reservoir, a large portion of the site that we are conserving is the wetland that is behind the dog park. So it's the dog park, the wetland that's behind it, and then there's an upland area where the existing salt shed is, and that's going to be removed. I think once that salt shed comes down, it may turn out to be actually a significantly large open space of grassed area. I don't know that it will be large enough for a regulation rectangle field. I don't think that that's quite possible because of the ledge outcrop that's right behind it. And then it drops off down in the other direction into the wetland, but it will definitely be a place where kids could ride their bike and go and play.
Would Magnolia Park still have place for the soccer teams to play, or is that not going to be big enough?
It's not going to be large enough for a regulation field. It's actually not right now. It will have some grassed areas where the kids will be able to kick a soccer ball around. We intentionally designed the landscape in the Magnolia Park so that there's connectivity between the Magnolia Pocket Park that we are going to put on Magnolia Ave frontage and the school parkland areas. So that grassed area that's over the stormwater system is, it's actually larger than you think it is. And then multiple playgrounds servicing the schools.
Thank you. Yes, it's funny.
So could you expand on the park land again? So I guess we're losing two tennis courts, a basketball court, a couple of baseball fields, and I understand it's not a regulation soccer field, but it's certainly something that folks would use up. And what's being proposed is just the existing salt shed, so that's perhaps will be open spaces. Are there any tennis courts, basketball courts, baseball fields, or soccer fields going to be replaced on there?
Well, just to correct that suggestion at the beginning, so the tennis courts actually exist on school property. They are not on the Article 97 offered property, so they do not need to be replaced. We have the one little league baseball field that is a regulation diamond field where we are conserving the baseball field as it is exactly now. We're not impacting that at all. So that's, you know, the one for one of its own kind. And then the basketball courts sort of we replace almost in the same location on the frontage. The playground is going to be moved closer to the basketball court so that the traffic circulates around it. So those two will be replaced in kind. And then the existing open space field, we're going to be trying to retain as much open space as we can in the landscape. And then in addition to that, more open space over on the parkland area of the site. If the city does decide sometime in the future that they want to make improvements to either the dog park or the open land that's next to it, once the salt shed comes down, it's absolutely their prerogative.
And with regards to the tennis courts, that's under the purview of the school department, whether they make the currently hold by replacing that existing service you're saying, so it's not under the purview of 97, so they don't have to do it? But the question is whether they should?
That would, it's not a, I would not even call it a should. I think that that is about, certainly about to ask, but it's not going to be a requirement under the MSBA for the school building, and it's not going, it's not a requirement for the Article 97 disposition.
Thank you.
Is the auditorium still being considered as a housing space for some of the SISIN classrooms? If so, will there still be a drama theater per room at Pickering? Where will SISIN have their concerts during the building? So first of all, yes, this space will be converted into classrooms, but not necessarily for the SISIN classrooms. They will be middle school classrooms, and Kevin has so graciously allowed us to use other spaces for the SISIN, to replace the SISIN classrooms. So we've been working with both schools, Deputy Gores and myself, with both schools' principals to plan out options for both the concerts and drama presentations, as well as the graduation moving on ceremonies. We will be using the gym space while the auditorium is being used for classroom space. No new question. During construction, how will parking for staff at both Pickering and SISIN be handled?
So we do, that was one of the questions from online. So we do have an upcoming meeting in April, April 23rd. It's going to be a Pickering and SISIN parent meeting, at which we will discuss all matters having to do with temporary site logistics, parking, where the kids are going to play, and any other questions that the Pickering and SISIN parents and interested parties might have. So I would encourage them to come to that. I don't have a diagram, but we will definitely have diagrams at that meeting.
There are no additional questions when the webinar is at this time.
Thanks for your attention, Senator. This comes up a lot in the PTL meetings. Dr. Gores, could you help us visualize what the classroom space would look like here in the auditorium? So this is going to be converted into classrooms. We understand it's going to be Pickering students here. What's that going to look like?
Steve, you want to speak to that, or?
So the, it would be temporary. There will be, there's three classrooms, two classrooms, two or three, and an office off of the main points of the stairwell, and therefore they have access to the rest of the school. We would build temporary partitions and ceilings and everything required for proper renovation.
So it will be enclosed with ceilings?
Yes.
And then presumably there will be space up front for the kids to use, or is that a different, to use for? So if there's two classrooms here, I think one of the concepts or proposals was to continue to allow space towards the front of the auditorium for the kids that are in that class.
I think it's using most of the auditorium space for those two classrooms and office.
I know that Mr. Donovan has shared with us that the stage and a little portion of the front here will be available, say for like meeting space or, you know, small group student work. But the majority of this space will be enclosed classrooms. There also, in the gym, there are some spaces, office space, and the locker rooms that are being converted as well into classroom space. They're pretty good sized locker rooms, and so those are being converted into space as well. Those classrooms, an office, and I believe two classrooms within Pickering, but closest to SISIN, are being used to replace the modular space, which was four classrooms and an office.
So the locker rooms you've talked about adjacent to the gym?
Yes, yes.
So those are going to be converted to classroom spaces?
Into classroom space, correct.
And those will be for the SISIN students or the Pickering students?
SISIN. We want to keep the SISIN students as close to SISIN as we can.
Thank you.
And is Craig, which we'll have those plans to share with you on April 28th through?
I have, I think two. Is the old Pickering going to still open when the new Pickering opens? Yes and no. I would say that the spaces like the gym cafeteria, auditorium, when it's brought back to its original state, will definitely be accessible to the SISIN students and families. As far as the remainder of the building, it is, I'm not sure yet how that will be utilized. We have a lot of buildings, as we all know, that need replacing, and so I know that the city and the school department are committed to trying to improve all of our schools. And so as we start the next phase, it could be utilized as swing space to allow for a building to be either refurbished or rebuilt. And then a second question, will the, will the old, it was the same question, never mind. So I answered it.
Okay, big stuff. Does anyone in the public or anyone in the audience still have any questions? This will be last call. Otherwise, you're welcome to reach out to Alex at the MIPA office or comment directly to the MIPA Environmental Monitor, and you can Google that, E E P A Environmental Monitor, and it will pull it up. And you can find the project for the Lynn Pickering School. It's project number 16805. Send out your comments online there, or you can email alexalexanderstresky@mass.com.
Sorry, one quick question came in. SISIN is getting new HVAC. And Mike, can you just confirm for me? I'm answering yes, SISIN is getting a new HVAC system this summer. Yes. Sorry. You're fine?
All right, well.
Thank you.
Seeing none, hearing none. Thank you so much for coming out. We really appreciate your comments and your feedback and your support for the school. Looking forward to moving forward with the project. Stay informed on the Pickering website. Stay around tonight for the school building committee meeting. And thank you again for being here. Thank you, Dr. Alvarez. Appreciate it.
The House will be in order. Members and guests who asked remain standing and join with me in pledging allegiance to the flag, United States of America. Aye, pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Porta Committee.
Committee on Rules reports recommending that the resolutions filed by Representatives Slotneck of Gardner and Whipps of Athol commending the American Legion Auxiliary Department of Massachusetts on its recognition of the month of April 2024 as the month of the military child, and April 15, 2024 as purple up for Military Kids' Day.
Mr. Galvin of Canton moves suspension of the rules. All those in favor say aye, all those opposed nay. The ayes have it. Rules are suspended. Question hours and adoption of the resolution. All those in favor say aye, all those opposed nay. The ayes have it. Resolution is adopted.
The Committees on Rules of the Two Branches Act in currently reports recommending that the following orders ought to be adopted. An order filed by Representative Farley Bovier of Pittsfield relative to extending until Monday, May 6, 2024, the time within which the Committee on Advancing Information Technology, the Internet and Cyber Security is authorized to report on current Senate and House documents for order, see House Number 4536, and the order filed by Mr. Roy of Franklin relative to extending until Thursday, June 20, 2024, the time within which the Committee on Telecommunications, Utilities, and Energy is authorized to report on current House documents for order, see House Number 4538.
Mr. Galvin of Canton moves suspension of the rules. All those in favor say aye, all those opposed nay. The ayes have it. Rules are suspended. Question hours and adoption of the order. All those in favor say aye, all those opposed nay. The ayes have it. Order is adopted. Paper from the Senate.
In order, having been approved by the Committees on Rules of the Two Branches Act in currently relative to granting the Committee on Environment and Natural Resources until April 12, 2024, within which time to make its final report on current, on certain current Senate documents relative to environment and natural resources matters for order, see Senate Number 2621, comes into Senate with the endorsement. This has been adopted by said branch.
Mr. Galvin of Canton moves suspension of the rules. All those in favor say aye, all those opposed nay. The ayes have it. Rules are suspended. Question hours on concurrence. All those in favor say aye, all those opposed nay. The ayes have it. House concurs.
The Committee on Steering Policy and Scheduling reports recommending that the following bills be scheduled for consideration by the House. The Senate Bill, amending the date of the annual town elections in the town of Walpole, Senate Number 2501, local approval received. The House Bills, relative to primary insurance, House Number 1133. The House Bill. Relative to reducing barriers to housing, House Number 1316. The House Bill, requiring notice to landlords relating to gas or electric shut offs, House Number 1370. The House Bill. Relative to additional inspectors, inspector engaging in plumbing or gas fitting work, House Number 2113. The House Bill. Relative to the membership of the PRIM Board, House Number 2489. The House Bill. Relative to property tax deferrals for seniors, House Number 2919. The House Bill. Relative to making amendments to the Massachusetts Business Corporation Act, House Number 3024. The House Bill. Designating the official jazz song of the Commonwealth, House Number 3105. The House Bill. Relative to charter school procurement, House Number 3116. The House Bill. Clarifying the vehicle transfer and registration laws, House Number 3422. The House Bill. Establishing a year-round market rate rental housing trust in the town of Truro, House Number 3723. The House Bill. Authorizing the town of Fairhaven to establish a fee for checkout bags, House Number 3825. The House Bill. Authorizing the town of Sudbury to establish a fee for checkout bags, House Number 3904, The House Bill. Designating April 5 as Oger Chung Neurodevelopmental Syndrome Awareness Day, House Number 4070. The House Bill. Designating Insert Bridge as the Lieutenant David S. Cutler Memorial Bridge, House Number 4108. And the House Bill. Amending the charter of the City of Gardner, House Number 4285, local approval received.
Mr. Galvin of Canton moves suspension of Rule 7A. All those in favor say aye, all those opposed nay. The ayes have it. 7A is suspended.
An Act. Amending the date of annual town elections in the town of Walpole, Senate Number 2501. An Act. Relative to primary insurance, House Number 1133. An Act. Relative to reducing barriers to housing, House Number 1316. An Act. Requiring notice to landlords relating to gas or electric shut offs, House Number 1370. An Act. Relative to additional inspectors, inspector engaging in plumbing or gas fitting work, House Number 2113. An Act. Relative to the membership of the PRIM Board, House Number 2489. An Act. Relative to property tax deferrals for seniors, House Number 2919. An Act. Relative to making amendments to the Massachusetts Business Corporation Act, House Number 3024. An Act. Designating the official jazz song of the Commonwealth, House Number 3105. An Act. Relative to charter school procurement, House Number 3116. An Act. Clarifying vehicle transfer and registration laws, House Number 3422. An Act. Establishing a year-round market rate rental housing trust in the town of Truro, House An Act. Authorizing the town of Fairhaven to establish a fee for checkout bags, House Number 3825. to establish a fee for checkout bags, House Number 3825. An act authorizing the town of Sudbury to establish a fee for checkout bags, House Number 3904. An act designating April 5 as Oker Chung Neurodevelopmental Syndrome Awareness Day, House Number 4070. An act designating a certain bridge as Lieutenant David S. Cutler Memorial Bridge, House Number 4108. And an act amending the charter of the city of Gardner, House Number 4285.
Question hours on ordering the bills to a third reading. All those in favor say aye, all those opposed nay. The ayes have it, the bills are ordered to a third reading. Following gross bills, I'm very quickly prepared now before the House's final passage. House 3575, an act providing for recall elections in the town of Conway. House 3879, an act establishing the appointed position of town treasurer and town collector in the town of Westwood. House 4061, an act amending the act establishing a charter for the town of Wrenham. All those, question hours on passing those bills to be enacted. All those in favor say aye, all those opposed nay. The ayes have it, the bills are passed to be enacted. Are there any objections perceived with the orders of the day? Chair hearing none. Chair has been informed that Senate 2544 has been released by the Committee on Bills on Third Reading, Third Reading of the Bill.
An act providing for the designation of polling locations in the city of Gloucester, Senate Number 2544.
Question hours on passing the bill are being grossed. All those in favor say aye, all those opposed nay. The ayes have it, bill is passed to be engrossed. Chair has been informed that Senate 2698 has been released by the Committee on Bills on Third Reading, Third Reading of the Bill.
An act validating the results of the annual election held in the town of Whitman on May 20, 2023, printed as Senate Number 2698.
Question hours on passing the bill are being grossed. All those in favor say aye, all those opposed nay. The ayes have it, bill is passed to be engrossed. Chair has been informed that House 1269 has been released by the Committee on Bills on Third Reading, Third Reading of the Bill.
An act relative to the Honorable George V. Caneely Jr., House Number 1269.
Question hours on passing the bill are being grossed. All those in favor say aye, all those opposed nay. The ayes have it, bill is passed to be engrossed. Mr. Mariano Quincy offers an order of hands of the clerk. Clerk, read the order.
Order that when the House adjourns to adjourn to meet on Wednesday next at 11:45 a.m.
Question hours on adoption of the order. All those in favor say aye, all those opposed nay. The ayes have it, order is adopted. Mr. Wongus August now moves that the House stand adjourned. All those in favor say aye, all those opposed nay. The ayes have it, House stands adjourned to meet Wednesday next, 11:45 a.m. Court officers will notify the Democratic members of a caucus at 12:15 in Rooms A1. In a full formal session. Oh, an informal session. Chair is in error.
Licensing Committee for Tuesday, April 9. Roll call, please. Madam Clerk.
Counselor Field.
Present.
President Counsel Hogan.
Present.
President Counsel Net.
Present.
President Counsel Allen Sugg.
Present.
President Counselor Mejimadre absent. Okay, we have a new taxi operator, Isaiahus Augustine. Isaiahus?
He's here. Thank you for being here. What's the wish of the committee?
May I motion to table?
Motion approved by Counselor Net.
He's here, right?
He's here? Oh, approve, yeah. May I motion to approve?
I apologize. I thought you said motion to approve. We have a motion to approve by Counselor.
Yeah, make some.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Hogan. Any discussion on that? Seeing none. What is the wish of the committee? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. License is granted. Your license will be ready Thursday after 8:30 in our city clerk's office. Thank you. Next.
Next new operator is Kenny Naris Peña. Kenny?
Is he here?
He's here. What's the wish of the committee?
May I motion to approve?
Motion approved. Second.
Seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That license is granted. Your license will be ready Thursday after 8:30 in our city clerk's office. Thank you.
And we have a new livery operator, Luis Lopez.
Luis, thank you for being here. What's the wish of the committee?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Counsel Allen Sugga. Seconded. Any discussion? None, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That livery license is granted and will be ready Thursday after 8:30 in the city clerk's office. Thank you.
And we have a taxi operator that was tabled from March 26, Luis Lorenzo. Luis Lorenzo.
Lorenzo, are you in the audience here? He is not here. What is the wish of the committee? Was already tabled on March 26.
He's not here?
He is not.
May I motion to table?
We already made a motion to table, Counselor Net.
Motion to deny.
We have a motion to deny.
Second.
Second. Any discussion on the deny? None, all in favor to deny?
Aye.
Opposed. That license is now denied. Next.
And the second one that was tabled is Rigoberto Salguero.
Mr. Salguero, you're here, thank you. What is the wish of the committee?
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve?
Second.
It's seconded. Any discussion on that motion? None, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That license is granted. Mr. Salguero, it'll be ready Thursday morning after 8:30 in the clerk's office. Thank you.
We have a new auto repair flambow license.
Excuse me one moment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Are you together? You're not Mr. Lorenzo, correct? Lorenzo?
Who is Lorenzo?
No.
One of you is Lorenzo, no, right?
No, neither one.
Gracias.
Gracias, Mr. Counselor.
I thought you were here for license or something, huh?
But you approved his license, right? Okay, he was, you're the Agustin Lopez? Yeah, he was.
All right.
You're approved.
Okay. I get nervous when people sit here after the votes. Thank you, Counselor Mottul. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a new auto repair flambow, 161 Chestnut Street, East Auto Repair.
You know, the owner there is running a couple of minutes late. Is 161 Chestnut Street in your ward, Counselor Mottul?
161 Chestnut Street. 161.
Or is that ward, how far up is that?
That's Mottul. There's our pitches.
I turned on? What is I turn on?
Calling the city clerk's office.
Yes, that is my warrant.
Okay, do you have any opposite? Have you spoken to the owner of East Auto? Do you have any comments?
No, I don't. Can we table it?
Okay, why don't we wait, hold off? I know he's running late in traffic, so if there's any questions, we'll hold off on that, if that's okay with you, Counselor? Okay? All right, Madam Clerk, we'll follow back up with that one at the end.
He has not spoken.
Is this him, sir?
161 Chestnut Street?
Yes.
Okay.
Could you come to the podium, please? State your name and your address, please. East Auto Repair, correct? Okay. Have you spoken to your ward counselor yet?
No, not yet.
Okay. Can you tell us a little bit about the business?
Yeah, so it's kind of the auto repair. I'm new on this, in Lynn. Well, I live in Lynn, but it's my first business here in 161 Chestnut Street.
I believe there used to be an auto body shop there already, right?
It used to be auto repair, but it was closed for a while, and then I took over.
Okay. Yeah. I have no position to that. The only thing that I would like to say is that that area has been very dirty. So obviously, bringing in an auto body shop, it's going to generate a lot of trash. So maybe we can put a condition, that stipulation that it's constantly being cleaned by. I know the gas station, they, I don't know if it's the owner, but they repainted everything and they've been doing a better job than it used to be before maintaining it clean, so.
Oh, yeah, so I'm the one who's been working there since last year. Because the.
You own the gas station too?
No, my partner owns the gas station. I used to work for him since August of last year, and now I decided to take over. I'm the one who's been running that place, and I tried to clean as clean as possible.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
Are you okay with it going forward with a motion from one of the councils on the Licensing Committee? Or do you prefer to table?
I'm okay with moving forward.
Okay, is there a council that would like to make a motion with?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve with the stipulations that Counselor Mottul mentioned along with the standard, along with the standard stipulations?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Net, yes?
Yes.
Okay, any discussion? Counselor Allen Sugg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm very familiar with this area. So are you part of the gas station or are you part of just that corner where you have to fix your car? Uh, yes. It looks like there's several businesses here.
So it's a gas station and an auto repair. So I'm taking over the auto repair, and my partner is keeping the gas.
So you also do an annual check for, for car checkups?
No, not at the moment. I mean, because they are not given license anymore, so we are on waiting list.
Yeah, I agree with.
Is that the inspection?
Yes.
Inspection, sir?
So when he said they used to, because I used to bring my car there way before. But I agree with Counselor Mottul. The area is really dirty and needs to be cleaned.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I know that place, but now it's completely different. And I might make sure that it's, you know, it's always clean. I mean, always clean, every day. So make sure there's no trash outside. You know, we have a dumpster, so.
Counselor Mottul's car.
Okay.
Any further discussion with any of the councils on this committee? No, we have a motion to approve with stipulations. We have it seconded. We've had our discussion. We have the support from the Ward Two Counselor and obviously, different interests or similar interests between the Ward Two and Ward Three Council that have been mentioned. We'll take a vote, and if it's approved, I ask that you reach out to Counselor Mottul to discuss things further, you know. And what is the wish? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. That license is granted for the new license. It'll be ready after 8:30 in the clerk's office on Thursday. Again, please reach out to the ward counselor to follow up on all that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome to Lynn.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I will, I will make the difference. Thank you.
Good job, Counselor Mottul.
We have renewals.
Take them as a whole if we can.
Motion to approve.
You have a motion?